All right, folks. Once again, good evening. We are now streaming live. Chairman Patillo, you have the gap. And you can unmute as you wish, folks.
Thank you, sir. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Thursday, February 25th, 2021, virtual special meeting of the Portsmouth City School Board. This meeting is now officially called to order. I ask now to pause briefly for a moment of silence. Thank you. We'll now have a pledge of allegiance and mission statement led by our vice chair, Mr. Keisha Atkinson.
Thank you, Chair. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. The mission of the public school is to engage all students in learning that will foster excellent excellence and responsible citizenship.
Thank you so much, agenda item 2.5 is attendance. Roll call vote, Madam Clerk.
Atkinson.
Here.
Hines.
Present.
Mr. Parent.
Present.
Mrs. Schumake.
Present.
Mrs. Thomas.
Present.
Mr. Tillage.
Here.
Dr. Whitaker.
Here.
Mrs. Williams.
Here.
Reverend Patillo.
Present.
All members are present.
Thank you so much, agenda item 2.6. Consideration of the agenda for the special call meeting of February 25th, 2021, while we're entertaining a motion at this time.
Move for approval, Hans.
Second, Williams.
Motion was made by Ms. Hans, second by Ms. Williams. Is there any discussion? No discussion. Roll call vote, Madam Clerk.
Ms. Atkinson.
Yes.
Mrs. Hines.
Yes.
Mr. Parent.
Yes.
Mrs. Schumake.
Yes.
Mrs. Thomas.
Yes.
Mr. Tillage.
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker.
Yes.
Mrs. Williams.
Yes.
Reverend Patillo.
Yes.
Shenanah.
Thank you so much. Agenda item 3.1, our only item for the night is a discussion for the plan for return to in-person learning, though be presented by Dr. Bracy. I asked all board members to allow him to finish his presentation. And at that time, you can ask as many questions as you so desire. But thank you all again for making time in your schedule for this very important item. I will now turn it over to Dr. Bracy.
Thank you, Chair Patillo. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Okay, perfect. Good evening, Reverend Patillo, members of the board. Tonight, we have a presentation for you that will give a detailed overview of my recommended plan for reopening schools, as well as the curricula and operational preparations of this plan. However, before we begin, I do want to provide some context and recommendations for your decision-making. Next slide. First, we've heard from many of our parents and staff members who have asked for clarification regarding the governor's declaration earlier this month that all schools return in some capacity by March 15. While this is an expectation, we've outlined that decision of how and when to reopen schools is one for you, our school board to determine. Similarly, we also have heard from others who have wondered why we have not reopened even partially as some of our sister divisions have, or why have we just not made one decision for the whole year? To them, I want to reiterate that while the decision-making process has been very fluid this difficult year, this board and our administration have always followed the guidance and best practices available provided by the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, as well as the state and local health departments. The division has also relied on parent feedback and staff feedback through surveys throughout the year, which both have been in the majority of not wanting to return to in-person instruction. Let me be clear that the decision of reopening has never been about whether or not we as a division could reopen, but when we should open. This conversation has been about our readiness. It's never been about our readiness. In November, the board voted to reopen schools in January, and our plans were in place to do that. This decision has always been about determining the best time for students, staff members, and the community to be supported and confident in their return. That in mind, there have, of course, been new developments, specifically access to the COVID-19 vaccine for our staff became available. While we have been able to offer this to our staff members this month, Portsmouth was one of the last cities to receive the vaccine doses, which is another consequential impact on reopening. In addition, we've learned more from the CDC about new mitigation procedures that have been successful in reopening schools. With this in mind, our recommended course of action for reopening would be as follows. Next slide. We want to ensure that every staff member who wants to receive the COVID-19 vaccine has the opportunity to receive it. We announced last week that we were hosting a fourth vaccination clinic yesterday, February 24. That means that all staff members who elect to get the vaccine will be fully vaccinated by Wednesday, March 24. It is my recommendation we bring the entire staff back on Monday, March 29. This will give teachers and staff members plenty of time to acclimate back to the school setting and prepare their classrooms. Beginning Monday, April 12, we will have all of our special education and ELL students K through 12 return for four days of in-person instruction. Beginning Monday, April 19, we will have all of our pre-K through three students join in the hybrid schedule. And on Monday, April 26, our fourth through eighth grade students will come back on a hybrid schedule as well. We want to keep our high school students in the virtual setting for the rest of the year. That said, we need to be clear that all students, regardless of if they select the virtual setting or not, will still have to come in for state-mandated SOL testing in May. I also want to point out that we're also planning to expand summer school offerings for middle and high school students, specifically those students that are current, are current and rising ninth graders who did not receive the traditional support in transition into high school with the pandemic. Next slide. With this plan shared, I'm going to bring Dr. Anita Nguyen, our Assistant Superintendent of Curriculum and Instruction, to give an in-depth look as to what this schedule will look like for our students and our teachers. Dr. Nguyen, the floor is yours.
Good evening, everyone. Next slide, please. So tonight, I want to start with an overview just to emphasize, first of all, that students are our priority. We are looking forward to in-person teaching and learning. The calendar that Dr. Bracy just outlined for you reflects that. But I do want to clarify for the board that tonight is about in-person instruction and bringing those students back. But even if we don't bring them back for in-person instruction right now, we are required to bring them back for SOL testing. This creates a challenge for us for providing instruction, as there are no waivers, and we must test our students in person. Testing for us will begin May 3. When students return to in-person learning, they will remain with their currently assigned teachers for in-person and virtual learning. This is vital to the relationships that they've established with their children, with their teachers, and it will certainly add to the success of our students and their families and help us with the continuity of teaching and learning. Teachers will be providing in-person and virtual instruction simultaneously. And once the testing begins, teachers will be proctoring SOL assessments. And so during this time, our virtual instruction will be mostly asynchronous or independent while teachers are giving those tests. We have set aside a time in the evening, in the afternoon after testing for teachers to check in with students and be able to provide some individual or group support. Next slide. Next slide. This outlines our testing requirements for grades three through 12. Testing will begin May 3, 2021, and run through June 9 of 2021. And as I've emphasized, it has to be done in person, so this will have a major impact on our in-person and virtual learning. We also have to provide Virginia kindergarten readiness testing in person, and this will begin on April 19. We have PALS testing for our elementary students as well, and that begins on April 26. Next slide, please. We know that this is a difficult transition for both our students, our teachers, and for our families. And we want to provide support for each of these groups. For our teacher support, we recognize that this will be a transition for them as well, and we will need to provide professional development to assist them in using webcams and technology in order to provide in-person and virtual learning at the same time. Curriculum and instruction will provide information sessions each Thursday during the month of March, on March 11, 18, and 25. These are prerecorded sessions that the teachers can watch at their own convenience, and they are intended to provide support and resources for teachers and to give them an opportunity to pose questions for curriculum instruction through a Google Form survey. Session one will focus on staff and student return to in-person learning to support teachers in understanding the health needs and the responsibilities of having in-person learning with their students. Session two, how can I teach live and virtual at the same time, will give tips around working with students in-person and virtual at the same time. And then session three is more content-based, specifically for elementary and secondary teachers, helping them with their specific content areas. Our teacher resource teachers, specialists, interventionists, and coaches are also going to be working directly with teachers and being able to provide them onsite support. And since Wednesdays will continue to be asynchronous, flip learning days, this will allow teachers to plan and collaborate and give them time to work with small groups of independent learners. Next slide, please. So we have samples of our pre-K through 12 schedules. Virtual students will signage each day for live instruction using the same schedule that they currently follow. And as I've said, during SOL testing, students will be asynchronous as their teachers will be proctoring those tests. In-person learning, and this is an important piece of this, will provide an opportunity for students to transition back to full-time in-person instruction. Some of our students have not had any in-person learning experience, particularly our pre-K and our kindergarten students. This will give them an opportunity to come in and experience firsthand what in-person instruction might look like to prepare them for full entry, we hope, in the fall. So this would be an opportunity not only to provide instruction, but to provide support and structure for students and teach them the routines and the expectations for classroom management and the expectations for student learning within a classroom setting. Elementary school counselors will continue to provide asynchronous social-emotional learning lessons, and they will provide mental health support through face-to-face or live Zoom interactions. Next slide, please. This is a sample of the pre-K hybrid schedule and the pre-K virtual schedule. And as you can see, Mondays and Tuesdays will be A-days for in-person instruction, and the students in virtual will be getting live instruction on B-days. Their days will be Thursday and Friday. Now, this is a sample schedule. Each of the schedules that you see, the times are not accurate. This is a template because our schools are scheduled based on the tiers, and the times could change based upon what the start times are for the schools and the end times. Next slide, please. This is a sample of the elementary hybrid schedule for an A-day student, and the schedule would flip for B-day students in that they would be virtual on Monday and Tuesday and in-person on Thursday and Friday. As you would note, in the afternoons, teachers will check in with virtual students for group or individual conferences or for small group instruction. Next slide. This is the elementary K6 full-time virtual learning sample schedule for virtual learners. Next slide. The middle school schedule. And we, this schedule will also flip for B-day students in that they'll be virtual on Monday and Tuesday also. Next slide. And our high school students will remain virtual. They will be coming in beginning May 3 to take their end-of-course SOL test, and they will be taking these tests on designated days. You might ask, why are we not looking at three through 12? Part of the rationale for that is that high schools will begin testing on May 3, and they will continue testing until June 9. So by the time they finish their testing, they will be into the end of school, basically, for high schools. And also, the transportation for this would be quite difficult to manage. Because of that, we're having many of our high schoolers come in on Wednesdays, on the asynchronous Wednesdays, to take their SOL tests so that we can accommodate the transportation needs for them. But high school, and also with our high schools, we have large, large numbers of students. We are working with staff so that when subjects are changed, normally, students would move from one class to another, but in elementary and middle school, we are working it out so that the teachers will move, and we won't have as much movement with the students. That would be very difficult to manage in high school because high school students would have to rotate from one class to another. And for health reasons and safety reasons, it would not be recommended to have that amount of activity in our high schools for those changing of classes and for the movement there. Next slide. We're also testing our English learners during the month of March. About 100 of our students are doing the WIDA access test starting March 3, and it will occur every day, including our asynchronous days. There are four separate tests for these, reading, writing, speaking, and listening, and these students are taking two tests per day. More than 60 new potential English learners are in the district, and they've been screened in person, and they've been screening them actually since the beginning of the school year. And teachers continue to strictly adhere to all of our PPS social distancing guidelines and safety protocols. Next slide, please. Special education will be offered in person four days a week throughout the rest of the school year, Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, and Friday. We have 42 self-contained classrooms throughout the division, pre-K through 12, and we have 10 CSEP classrooms. Next slide. Our CTE students will be returning to in-person instruction four days a week, beginning April 12 for barbering, cosmetology, nail tech, and welding. And welding students are currently attending labs on our TCC campus now. Next slide. As I mentioned, we also want to make sure that we support our parents and our school communities. We know that communication is vital to the success of our students and our staff, and we want our parents to feel free to contact schools and teachers and principals and work with our staff to address any concerns that they may have. Our parent liaisons and school counselors will work directly with parents to provide resources and respond to concerns or to answer questions. We continue to provide technology support through the Parent Help Center, and we provide resources on the virtual learning page. And we also provide resources for mental health on the Here to Help webpage. Next slide. Safety supersedes everything, so student and staff safety is very important. We will be requiring all students and staff to wear face coverings. In accordance with the CDC guidelines and the Health Department, temperatures will not be taken on school buses or school entrances. Any student who doesn't feel well in school will be sent to the clinic for assessment. And if there are any COVID-19-related symptoms, the child will be placed in the school's sick room, and parents will be asked to come and pick him or her up. Employees who report to work and are not well will be asked to leave. And if there is a COVID case in a school, we will make sure that we follow all of the Health Department protocols for notification and contact tracing. Thank you. Next slide. Dr. Bracy.
Thank you, Dr. Nguyen. Finally, before we open up for questions, I want to address the operational questions that still may be lingering about the processes and protocols we have in place to keep our staff and students safe. I know for many of you, this will be a review as we've shared this information repeatedly in board meetings, as well as in our FAQs on our website. However, we did feel it was important to reiterate this information. Tonight, Dr. Jerry Simmons, our Auxiliary Services Director, is here to talk about the work that will be in place. Dr. Simmons?
Good evening, everyone. Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
It is my pleasure to present the Auxiliary Services Plan for Reopening. Next slide, please. In Portsmouth Public Schools, we started about a year ago with the establishment of a pandemic committee. This committee consists of about 22 individuals here in Portsmouth that meet on a regular basis. And we wanted to do this to help auxiliary services in terms of decision-making as it relates to the pandemic. Several members on the call tonight are represented on the pandemic committee to include Dr. Komati, Mr. Theo Falk as well. And so Dr. Bracy attends our meetings, gives us good information and guidance as it relates to examining CDC guidelines. We've been able to visit and collaborate with other local school divisions. We've had other school divisions inquire with us in terms of how we started our very own pandemic committee, and so we've had visits from neighboring divisions as well. We want to provide support and training to principals and building administrators, and we do have building administrators serving on this committee at all levels in terms of getting their input. We want to always look at researching new disinfectant and cleaning protocols. And one of the things we're most proud of, that out of this, we created our own deep disinfectant teams. You may hear this referred to as our DDT. And so we have members who are out on the schedule, deep cleaning and sanitizing our buildings on the schedule. They rotate eight buildings per night, three nights, all 24 buildings, to include the central office downtown third floor as well. Next slide. And so we ordered, we were proactive and able to get 50 handheld electrostatic sprayers. As you are aware, this is a hot commodity. These things are hard to get their hands on, but we have 50 here in Portsmouth Public Schools. Our DDT team, along with all of our head custodians and lead custodians, have been trained in the use of deep cleaning and sanitizing and the chemicals that we are allowed to use. Keep in mind that schools are under certain standards and protocols of chemicals that we are allowed to use for both safety for our students. And so Mr. Herbert Robinson, along with Mr. Tom Marsh and our team, make sure that we're following all standards as it relates to our public schools. Next slide. In terms of just some of the things that we've done as it relates to building safety, you see in the picture here, we have put down six-feet social distance markers in all of our elementary and middle schools. We're in the process of moving this to the high schools. We're proud of the elementary decals that are customized. We work with the principals to have their very own logos on them, and so it gives a guide when students come into the building in terms of following CDC guidelines, in terms of how far apart they need to remain at all times. And so you see members of our crew putting those down, proud to report that they should all be down by this Monday. And so we're in the process of putting them down now in our elementary schools. We have touchless standing sanitation stations. We ordered 100 of those. And so we issue those out according to the size of the schools. And so if you go in our schools, they are in place in all of our schools. We've got safety signage up in all of our schools. Just today, we see the report that our sneeze guards will be in on Tuesday. We've ordered 10,000 sneeze guards that we'll put on the student desk in terms of as a protective barrier around our students' desks. We've had a lot of conversation around that, and so we decided to make that purchase. And so they will be in the warehouse on this coming Tuesday. We also will have touchless water filling stations. They came in today. We'll begin that install tomorrow. And so our water fountains will be covered so that our students, when they do return, won't be able to go in and touch those that are not in use, but then those that are, it will be a touchless water filling, where they can just feel their bottles. And so we're very careful to make sure that we looked at all of those areas as well. Urinals, we've gone in the bathrooms to make sure that they're covered and spaced in terms of social distances, particularly in the boys' bathrooms, in terms of where we have urinals. And so that process is always already taking place. And we've developed maximum classroom capacity, information that we've distributed to Dr. Bracy and all of the principals. We've gone in every classroom to actually measure how many desks we can get in six feet apart on a hybrid schedule so that if classrooms are not at maximum capacity, our teams will be going out to assist principals with classroom setup as it relates to how many students we can accommodate with the social distancing measure. And we've had a lot of conversation about our filtering systems, and so we met today. We'll be changing some of our filtering systems out. We have a PO already in place for that. We'll change and upgrade to a different filtering system. Keep it in mind that this has to be done delicately because in schools, our CO measures have to be tested. And so we don't want to do, we understand COVID-19, but we want to be careful because we don't want to do anything to throw that off. And so we're getting into springtime now. Again, Mr. Robinson and Mr. Marsh do an excellent job with handling that and making sure we're meeting all the standards. As you know, we have to go through inspections with all of that. And so we will be doing some of that, but I just want to caution, there has been some conversation about that. And so with the weather changing and now it being, we're getting ready to switch over to air conditioning, we just don't want to make sure we do anything in the systems that will unintentionally throw them off. And so we've had a lot of conversation around that as well. Next slide. Personal protective equipment, we are very well stocked in the warehouse. We have had to make room in Clark where I am now in terms of for other materials. And so I get a printout every day, real time, in terms of how much PPE that we have. And so just for public notice in terms of just face masks, adult face masks, we have about 100,000 adult face masks on hand, on supply, ready to go. We know that our younger children cannot wear the adult mask, and so we have about 40,000 child mask pre-K, three smaller masks that we have on hand. Hate to keep calling Mr. Robinson's name, but he will be the one that works with the principals to distribute in a timely manner and get out the distribution of all of the PPE to the schools at the appropriate time. Right now, it's still in the warehouse, but everything, I don't know if you can see the sheet I'm holding up, but everything from hand sanitizer to hand soap to electrostatic sprayers to DV7, to wipes, to disposable gowns, to our almost entire warehouse is now filled with COVID-19 supplies. And so regular tissue and things like that, we've had to make additional room for just our general supplies. And so we feel really good about where we are and being ready to go and being able to distribute PPE. We have high and low numbers, and so when we get to a certain point, we'll automatically, we know that we have the suppliers that we can restock on a moment's notice. And Mr. Falk works closely with us in that regard in terms of making those orders. Next slide. And so food services, all students will continue to be able to eat. And so food services, all students will continue to be able to eat lunch at no cost. Meals, when we do come back, we propose to serve on a grab and go basis, set up on kiosk. And so students will report as they come in from buses, be able to get their breakfasts. We'll have that in a contactless type setting while they'll be able to be issued their breakfasts. And then we propose eating in the classrooms in a social distance type setting. We also propose doing something similar for lunch as well. And so we don't want any student in Portsmouth Public Schools to go without a meal. Right now, we're serving under the summer seamless program still. So you really don't have to be particularly a student to be served. It's just a certain age requirement in terms of being served a meal. And so we want to make sure that everybody understands, even though students that are not in school on a hybrid will be able to come to any elementary or high school and still pick up a meal. And parents may pick up meals for students as well. And so we've been dealing with this since last, I think, February or March. And so we want to make sure that everybody knows in terms of meals are very important. There'll be hot meals. And so that's why the kiosk comes in to keep the meals warm in terms of, so we can still simulate as best we can a regular school day. Although the, the situation may be different in terms of how we do it. But Mr. Gailhoff has worked very closely to make sure that we want everybody to know that they will still be able to receive their meals. Next slide. And so transportation services will be key for us. We just have a diagram that just talks about in a COVID situation in terms of how many students we can transport on a seventy-seven passenger or sixty-five passenger bus and how many Portsmouth actually has. And so there may be some flexibility with this that Dr. Bracy will address in terms of a waiver that we'll be able to get more students than this. But I think that may require board approval. And so we'll talk about that at the appropriate time. But based on the original CDC guidelines that came out, this was what came out in terms of kind of like a zigzag pattern. We're transporting students now for athletics, as you very well may know. We've transported earlier in the year for exceptional when they were coming, for special ed when they were coming in. We also transported for SOL testing. And so we've got some experience in terms of transportation and bringing our students in. We've got athletic contests that we'll be transporting for this weekend, Friday and Saturday. And so all of these things require buses to be sanitized, wiped down, sprayed, both in between tiers. And also our DDT goes out and makes sure that they are sanitized and cleaned once everything is done. So for example, when our buses come in off these athletic trips, we'll go out, we already have a plan to deep clean them, spray them so that they're ready to go for Monday morning. Next slide. And so we know we've got unload students, one student at a time. If you've been to in our schools, we have the six feet social distance markers even on the sidewalk, on the bus ramps, transportation order those, special markings on the cement. And so if you've been to our schools, hopefully you've seen those. We talked about the disinfecting between each tier. We also looked at air purification systems on our buses as well. But keep in mind again, it's going to be spring. And so letting a window down may serve the purpose just as well until we get back to the fall. But we are, we do plan on, we do know a company that can outfit our buses with those as well. So we've been in meetings concerning that as well. And then I talked a little bit about the six feet social distance markers already. Next slide. And so I, I would just like to thank again Mr. Robinson, Mr. Gailhoff, Mr. Privet, Mr. Marsh, our team for working daily, every day since we shut down school to make sure we're doing everything that we know how to do to make sure that our faculty, our staff, our students, everybody's safe in all of our buildings.
Thank you, Dr. Simmons, for the presentation. Again, this plan is for your further discussion and consideration. But we believe this option incorporates the board's priorities for reopening that you shared with us. We're happy to take any questions at this time. Thank you.
Thank you again, Dr. Bracy, for the presentation. And I know the board members are anxious to ask questions. This item is up for discussion for tonight. And we will meet again next week to take a final votes. We have time to ask questions tonight and also to send questions after the meeting ends. To make it easy, I'll just start at the top of my screen and go down. Vice Chair Atkinson, you're first.
Thank you, Chair. I'm actually still taking everything and I wrote a lot down, so I'm gonna defer to the next person.
Okay, Mr. Parent.
Thank you. Thank you, Chairman Patello. I think it's, I think the plan has been well thought out. At first, you know, I had some reservations because I think high school students should be afforded the opportunity to go back. It, it, it should be their choice whether they want to go back or not. But then after hearing Dr. Nguyen, you know, that may not be possible. But one of the things that I have said to Dr. Bracy, and I think I brought it up, is that I really feel very passionate about our high school seniors having some type of graduation. Because now that the governor has lifted the sporting events, I would assume that we could have, I think we can have up to a thousand. So I think that we need to work on having some type of outdoor graduation at each of the high schools. It could be morning, afternoon, but the seniors have lost this year. They've lost, they've lost opportunities, prom and everything else. And if we can give them a graduation where they walk across the stage and get their diploma. I think that's, that would be great. But I think, Dr. Simmons, you have presented a well organized safety plan for the school division. I think it's well thought out. I think parents and the community will be satisfied with all the safety measures that we have taken to ensure that when the students do come back, that they will be safe. And I applaud Dr. Bracy and his staff for this. My only reservation was that until I heard Dr. Nguyen, I was going to say, why can't we bring, why can't we give the choice to the seniors and, and have them come back? Because I know I've got, I've got a grandson in Virginia Beach. They have a choice. He's going back tomorrow. Some are not, but you know, that's, that's a different school division and every school division is doing it different. I just would, would like to see our seniors back in school. But Dr. Nguyen, I think that you've kind of clarified that for me. So I'm satisfied with your answer. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Parent. Ms. Hines.
Thank you, Chair. And I would like to also be able to wrap back around after everybody has had a question, time to ask questions because sometimes the discussion that happens here is going to lead to further discussion. So I would like to reserve that as well. I, I do have a couple of questions and they're kind of all over the place. One of the concerns I want to hit on is the fact that the contact tracing will be handled by who? Because we need to make sure that the tech tracing for, for our students and for our staff is the same at every building. So is it going to be handled by our nurse supervisor? Is it going to be handled by the Department of Health? Is everybody aware of what those policies and what those procedures are going to be? That's my first question. Do you want me to list the questions or do you want me to give time for response, Chairman?
I'll leave it to Dr. Bracy however he wants to handle the questions.
No, we, we can go ahead and, and, and take them one at a time.
Okay.
So the, the first question with the contact tracing, we're going to use the, the same procedure that we have in place now with our, with the staff. As you, you remember that, you know, we, we had students in our buildings the first day of school with our, our spare student. So this process was already in place. So really we're just picking back up from where, where we were with that. And the contact tracing, of course, it starts at the school and the health department assists us with that as well.
Okay. So I just want to make sure that when the teachers come back and in part of those Wednesday or Thursdays where they're doing training, that they understand what that process is going to be as well. Because those teachers are going to be the ones that are impacted first, along with the bus drivers. If we do, if when we do have somebody that does come and sit. So I just want to make sure that, that, that those are outlaid and everybody knows what's going on. My second question is, is for the bus drivers. Are we, what are we doing for their safety? Because they are our frontline for these kids that are coming on. So, excuse me. So while we talk about face shield, you know, the, the sneeze guards on the desk and we talk about all the stuff in the school, besides the air filtration system for the bus drivers. What else do we have to help them stay healthy as well as we go through this transition?
I'll, I'll, I'll take a stab at it first and Dr. Simmons can, can clear up anything that I say that may not be accurate. But I asked that specific question to Mr. Privet, our transportation coordinator. And because we were thinking of, could we put up some type of shield surrounding the driver? But we were, we were told that we can't do anything to impact that area that the driver sits in. So the only thing that we can do is just to make sure that he's wearing, or he or she is wearing a face covering.
Okay. There's, there's no way we can do a, a paint of Plexiglas behind the driver like they have on the HRT buses or other public transportation entities?
No. Not the Simmons, anything you want to add to that?
No, school buses are governed by the federal government. And right now, even with COVID, if you do anything in that line, they consider that altering the school bus. And so they won't allow you to put up any type of. Now, now we propose to have, you know, certain hand sanitizer available, mask. We've got even in terms of those people who would prefer face shields in terms of masks. We've got four thousand face shields on hand here in terms of, so it's a matter of Mr. Privet training the drivers in terms of. But right now, even with COVID, the federal, because buses are CDS are federal, they won't allow you to alter the school bus. And we don't have any waivers that will allow you to alter the bus.
Okay. So when we look at seating students on a bus, are we seating students directly behind the bus driver? Or is that seat remaining empty to give some space?
We can look at having that seat up there in terms of to put that space there in terms of in a zigzag pattern and not have a, I think that's a reasonable request that we can definitely look at.
I, I, I mean, everybody, everybody is impacted. And I know we're trying to look at it from every angle. And I do understand that we can plan and we can plan, but there's always going to be things that we don't plan for. So I appreciate it. My next question is, is really for anybody who wants, is up for grabs. I am just concerned about the loss of instructional time with moving to a hybrid schedule. With doing an early release and then doing another two hours at home once the kids get home from school. I would prefer that we had a full day in school with our students instead of doing hybrid, you know, in-person instruction and then going home. And also like doctor or like board member, parent said is an option for our high schoolers. Because the word that I have been using in my brain to wrap my head around all of this is an option. I feel as if we need to give options for everybody to make the decision for what they feel best for their student and their student learners. And so my concern is the loss of instructional time by doing a hybrid schedule and dismissing at twelve or twelve-thirty, whatever that time may be, but also a lack of options for our high school students. And I'm finished for now. Mr. Chairman Parent, Chairman Patilla.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Hines. Ms. Williams.
Thank you, Chairman Patilla. I've listened to Dr. Nguyen. I've listened to Dr. Simmons. And I, I think they've done an outstanding job trying to make sure that we bring our kids back safely and the staff. And it seems like they've covered most of the things that I had some questions about. So I will reserve my time maybe to come back later, but right now I'm, I'm fine with what they had presented. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Whitaker.
Yes, first, thank you to Dr. Bracy and the administration for presenting the plan. I thought it was well thought out. I had a question about the, the high school teachers. So since the high school students will remain virtual, are they required to be in the building to teach? That was my first question.
Yes, yes, ma'am. They, they will be. Yeah, all teachers will return on March twenty-ninth.
Okay. And how many students are we bringing back based upon the, the survey that was done for, for parents to select whether or not they'd be virtual or in person?
Well, what we're going to do, Dr. Whitaker, we, 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 we did the last survey that we did was done end of October, early November. So those numbers, we, we're not, we don't want to use those numbers because a lot of, a lot of things have changed since then, you know. So what's your thoughts were then about the pandemic may be different now. So we're going to launch a new survey. I think we're going to do it tomorrow. And, and then capture some, some more recent numbers so that we can have a better, we can better plan. And after the survey, for those that we haven't heard from, we're going to send that information to the schools and have them reach out to, to parents and students that they have not heard from to try to get an accurate, as close to an accurate count as we can. But you know, we'll try that, but the default will be if we can't contact you, then we're, we're going to assume that you're going to remain virtual.
Okay. And then my next question is since we're going to be on a half day schedule for pre-K and elementary. Will we be offering or will there be any after school care in the buildings?
Yes, yes, it will be. We'll have our provider, Alphabet, will be in the buildings to provide, you know, before, after, after care, whatever, whatever they need.
Okay. And then my last question for now is what happens if we, in the event of a cluster of a outbreak in a building?
Well, through the, through the contact tracing, it will, that will help us determine what we need to do. If it needs to be centered to that particular classroom or if it's widespread enough for the school. But you know, we'll, we'll have our guidance on that when we do the contact tracing. So that's, you know, as I mentioned earlier, you know, we, we've had a little experience with that at the beginning of the year when we had students, our spare students in the building. And staff has been in the buildings. So we, we've dealt with cases that we, that required us to do the contact tracing. So the health, our professionals as well as Mrs. Durin works closely with the health department and they work with us through the, the contact tracing itself.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Shumey.
Thank you, Chairman. I do want to thank Dr. Bracy, Dr. Nguyen and Mr. Simons on everything that you guys have laid out for us. I think it was very detailed, very thought out. Just as my fellow board members echoed previously. I do have a question. I know the premise of our decision making over the past year has been solely based on where we are, the metrics. Like, are we below ten percent? Are we above? How are we looking? I understand that the governor has made his suggestion on us returning or having a plan to return back to school. But with all due respect, if we're not at a good place, I could care less. Where are we right now? Do you know?
Yes, I looked at it earlier. I think it was at sixteen point seven, if I'm not mistaken. As of today.
Okay. Okay. My next question, not necessarily, well, I guess it could be posed as a question. The schedule, the schedule, although very detailed. I don't know. And I know you guys are going to put out something tomorrow just to get suggestions, but it seemed very overwhelming for the teachers and possibly the students. And being that And being that this is the last, um, quarter, so to speak, and we're kind of phasing into the end of the school year. Do we see that it's, would it be beneficial for them to return with that small amount of time? And that small amount, just as, um, Board Member Hines said, instructional time with that, in your opinion? And if you can't answer right now, I totally understand this to be up for grabs. Is it beneficial to bring them back, um, during that small amount of time? You know, outside of the fact that we're at sixteen percent right now? And again, our whole decision-making has been off of whether or not it's safe for them to return. But with this small amount of time, is it beneficial for our, um, for our students to return, um, with that small amount of time?
Uh, uh, well, when I hear that, I think of that in, um, so many different, so many different ways.
Yes, sir.
Because we all know that our students, um, most of our students learn best for, with in-person instruction.
Mm-hmm.
So that's something that, that we know that that's good for them. So, I mean, I think a little of that is better than, than nothing at all.
Okay.
But I also think the other piece to that also, and is what the, the Pediatric Association is saying also is that, you know, is the, that social emotional piece, you know, getting students in and getting them involved. You know, that's something that, that, that is a big, um, factor as well. So, I mean, I think it's, I think it's, it, it's beneficial if we can do it, if we decide to do it. You know, I don't, I think it's, it's, it's more, I think I see more advantages and disadvantages in it if you, if you're looking at it that way. Taking all the numbers out of it, I'm not, I'm not looking at it from the metrics. I'm just talking about from the standpoint of in-person and that interaction that hasn't been there, um, in the past year.
Okay, understood. And, and, uh, just so everybody can be clear, um, I understand that holistically, I have three kids. My youngest is in elementary school, my middle is in middle school and my oldest is in high school. And they all have had their, um, challenges with this virtual learning. So I get it. My youngest, she is one of those types who needs that one-on-one, she wants to see her friends, she wants to hug her friends. That's what scares me because she's a hugger and she hasn't seen her friends in over a year. And so when she, if we do decide, and I'm just going to be perfectly honest, I do not want to be a hypocrite at all. I have not decided to allow my kids to go back to school. So that's why I'm, I'm a little edgy and I'm, I'm looking at it from a parental standpoint, not necessarily as a board member's standpoint. But I'm just looking at my children in general. My youngest, she loves to hug, she misses her, her, her friends in person. And so that's going to be a whole ordeal. And it may not be safe. And then my middle school child, virtual learning, all the parents that have contacted me, I get it. This has turned him one hundred percent lazy. So I get it. My oldest, she has had some challenges. So I understand the need for in-person. I just want to see where we are as a board. Are we still looking at the metrics? Or are we now kind of, you know, doing away with that and looking at everything else holistically? So I don't have any more questions and I do thank you, Dr. Bracy and everyone who took the time to, uh, present this information to us tonight.
And Ms. Schumate, before you go, I know one of the pieces, I know that, that you shared with us when we had our, um, two-by-two meetings was that if we saw ourselves not bringing our high school students back was to at least look to see if we could um, bring in some of those CTE students with some of those specialty, you know, courses. So that is something that, that we, we were able to, to work in, to, to phase in.
And I appreciate you for that. Thank you so much, Dr. Bracy.
Thank you so much, uh, Mr. Tillich.
Yes, thank you, um, Chair. Uh, first, I want to thank Dr. Bracy and his team for presenting such a, um, comprehensive, detailed, um, plan. Um, I have a couple of questions, um, that I'm going to ask tonight and then a couple that I'll probably send out an email or ask later on between now and next week. Um, the first questions I have are concerning, um, the CTE programs. I think that that was a great thing to, um, add, um, back to the schedules, allowing kids to come back to school um, to do the CTE programs. A couple of questions I have regarding that though, will transportation be provided for those students, um, to attend CTE programs? And if so, will it be housed at just one school or will it be at all three high schools?
The programs, transportation will be provided. The, the programs, um, I think that we saw, I think those are at, um, uh, SC Norcom, the barbering, the cosmetology and the nail tech. So those, those three are at IC Norcom. The, the welding is, is currently taking place at TCC.
Okay. And also, will those CTE programs be taken, um, during the same timeframe as the regular kids? Is the kids will be in school from eight to twelve?
The actual schedule on that, um, now, I, I see Mr. Hill up here. Mr. Hill, do you have the schedule for that?
Yes, sir. Um, we're blessed with those programs of being double blocked. So we have some flexibility there with that time. Like currently with the welding, it's running in the second two blocks. So the students go over there and they're done in that time period. So they're able to bus over at eleven thirty and be done by one thirty. Um, and with the double block, we can also do it in the morning, two blocks, if we have that time working.
Okay. Um, also my next question, well, my next statement is regards to high school students. Um, I want to agree with, um, Board Member Parent, um, you know, a lot of our seniors, this is, this is it for them. Uh, and then we have some freshmen that have never stepped foot, um, into a high school. Um, so next year is going to be a little bit more rough for them when they do get to the tenth grade. Um, and then, of course, having kids that are athlete students, being able to participate in sports, but then not giving them the option um, to participate in in-person learning. Um, I would like to see this year for our students, um, our seniors to have, um, a graduation. Um, maybe looking into, um, ODU's Ted Constance Center, um, the Pavilion, something that we can allow our students to have a normal, well, somewhat normal graduation. Um, I think it's definitely needed for them and I think it's needed for the school division for us to move towards normal soon, uh, for next school year. Um, also, what is the capacity for the classrooms?
It, it varies at, um, at, at each school. Um, as Dr. Simmons mentioned, you know, we, we have a diagram for each school and each classroom. So that sets, I mean, at the middle school, high school, some of those classrooms are a little larger than some of the elementary schools. So you may be able to get ten to twelve students in, in some of them. Some of our newer elementary schools don't have the capacity, some of the older elementary schools where the classrooms were larger when they built them years ago. So it varies, you know? On average, we're, we're thinking anywhere from, it could be from eight to twelve, um, across the division.
Okay. All right. Uh, so that kind of leads into my next, um, question in regards to the transportation. Um, I noticed that on the presentation, um, a regular school bus is supposed to hold sixty-six kids on a normal day. Um, but during COVID, um, it was recommended to have seventeen and that a seventy-seven passenger was meant to have, what, twenty-two? Um, I know that on a regular school bus that holds sixty-six students, there's eleven seats on the side of the bus, which means if you put one person in each seat, there'll be twenty-two, um, students. Um, but then if we're leaving two, the two seats behind the driver vacant, that takes us down to twenty. Um, and I noticed that in the presentation, it mentioned at, at the board's discretion that there could be a waiver. Um, my personal opinion, I do not think that we should do a waiver for that. Um, if we're only doing eight to twelve kids in a classroom, we should definitely not be going above twenty kids on a school bus. That's a whole lot smaller and the ventilation is nowhere in comparison to that of a building. Um, so that's my questions and comments for tonight and I will be sure to email and follow up between now and next week.
Okay. Then, then for the, um, for the, let's see, the high school students, let me, I made a couple of notes as well at what you were asking. Uh, hold one second. Okay, so with the high school students, we, we realize that they haven't been in as well. So the, the rising and current, um, ninth graders, we plan to do a transition program for them, um, during the summer. Ordinarily, um, our summer school for high schoolers are all virtual anyway, with the exception of the transition program that we do for incoming freshmen of, I think we do it for four days because we, we're on the summer schedule. But what we were, what we're looking at for this year is for those, for those rising and current ninth graders, we're looking at a three-week, um, maybe like a three-week, um, transition program, uh, for them that would give them time in the building as well as focusing on some core areas, uh, as well that, that they all could benefit from. We understand high school, um, high schoolers come in at so many different levels because they, they can take some of the advanced courses in, in middle school. But we do want to bring these kids in to get them acclimated to the building, being in the, the classroom setting and getting accustomed to their buildings. We're looking at doing the, something very similar, uh, at the middle school as well. You know, running, um, an extended, um, transition program there also to give them that same opportunity that we're affording to the high school, um, students as well. Uh, for the, the graduation, we just, we have to wait and see, you know, what the, where we are uh, within the executive orders that the governor has. Uh, right now with the, with the extension to a, for a thousand, you know, we don't fall into the recreation. Well, we're, we're still in the recreation piece of that. So we're still held to the two fifty. So we're not at the one thousand mark just yet. So we have to wait and see if that's going to be lifted for, um, outside, uh, events. Inside, there's still restrictions there. So, I mean, that's a lofty goal, but I would, I would love to be, but to be in the, in the Chartway Arena and at ODU. But we'll just have to sort of wait and see. But we do have some plans in place that, that, um, Dr. Cromartie has been, uh, meeting with the high school principals regularly and they're looking at, um, options. You know, we, of course, last year we did the, the drive-through graduations, which were, uh, everybody enjoyed it because they had a chance to come together. But we're trying to see what we could do, um, even beyond that, if we're still under a cer- certain cap. So we're, we're, we're working on that to bring some type of, um, graduation experience to the families, even if it's something that we have to do locally at the school, on the football field. I mean, we're still in the planning phases of it, but we are going to try to do something, uh, special, uh, for them. So I just wanted to address that, that, that being one of your questions. And then the last one you had about the, the buses. So with the buses, now, if, or right now, the, you see the limit saying twenty-two. But the CDC also says that if you have kids that are coming out of the same household, that you can have, um, they can all sit on the same row. So that will increase the number of twenty-two, uh, on the school bus. If you have families that are coming in out of the same household, then we will know more about that once we get the survey and find out who's coming and who's going to be tre- needing transportation and then we, we'll figure all that out. So the twenty-two can exceed that if they're coming out of the same household because they can sit on the same seat. The other, other piece to that, uh, Mr. Tillich, uh, the, the way that a lot of these, um, other school divisions are able to get these students in by way of transportation is they're, they're getting waivers from the division. Because we have a, we have a lot of our students that depend on the yellow bus that gets them to school. So if we're saying that we can, that we're going to be able, we're going to stay with that, that, that minimum. And I understand if we do, but now that's going to, that's going to cause us to have to go back now and reassess if we're going to be able to bring more students in, like the, like the middle school. Because it may impact that because we may have to run, we may now even have to run a double run to get kids to a particular school. So i- if you take that off the table, then it may be a two or three runs that we have to make in order to get those kids into school. You were former bus driver. I know you've pulled into some of the communities and it takes, uh, we have a regular school bus that we, 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 we have what, three buses in, in one neighborhood and it's full when it comes out. So imagine what that would be with these restrictions. So we're not trying to get three to a seat, but two to a seat possibly, um, just to mirror what some of our other neighbors are doing with that. Of course, with all the other mitigations in place. So that was just something when you brought that up, I wanted to share with the board, just for your consideration to be thinking about that.
Thank you so much, Dr. Bracy. Uh, Ms. Thomas?
Thank you, Chair Patilla. And thank you, Dr. Bracy, Dr. Simmons and Dr. Wen for putting together a well-thought-out plan, uh, for looking at options to return to school. And, um, this is a great thing about going last, most of my questions were answered already. Um, so thank you to the presentation, also my board members that went before me. I'm going to stay on this bus transportation, um, subject a little bit more because that's where I, I get a little fuzzy and like Board Make, uh, Board Member Schumate. I have my school board member hat on as well as my parent hat on. So, um, let me see. My question then is, Board Member Tillich kind of answered one of them. Um, in terms of just the safety aspect for our bus drivers, right? So if we are, if we cannot outfit the bus with the sneeze guard like Board Member Hines had asked, I guess I just feel a little, like we should be able to do, do something. Um, so I, I guess like my, not really a question, just a comment, I agree with Board Member Tillich that I'm a little wary about increasing that or having that waiver, um, due to already the safety aspect for our bus drivers. Uh, my next, my actual question is also concerning our after-school transportation. Um, if we're going to do a half-day schedule, are we also providing transportation for any students that need after-school care?
We don't provide the transportation for the, the, the Alphabet students. We provide transportation for like the school-sponsored after-school. If you want to look at like the Twenty First Century or the, or the, the, the athletic runs that we, that we have for kids that was, that, that would, that stay after. So we do provide that, but we don't provide it, that's, that's for the parents to, to drop off early and to pick up late. That's, that's, that, the Alphabet, that's what they do. So we don't provide the transportation for that.
Okay, so basically any elementary student family would need to pr- provide that transportation if their child needed after-school care. Is that correct?
That's correct, as they, as they would be doing anyway.
Yes, but I, I, I know that we are doing half-days, so this way the schedule looks, a parent would have to be available to, to be home somewhere on, somewhere around twelve thirty, noon. I'm just thinking about from a working parent perspective, um, and what we're able to provide, especially for our most, um, our children that might need to be in person the most. Um, and what their options are if they don't have anyone at home during that time due to work schedule. So I'm just trying to think out loud there. Okay. All right.
And, and with that, and, and that's a good, a good, a good question. But when we say we dismiss at twelve thirty, now, you, you have to remember with the, the protocols, the, and everything that we have in place, it's going to take some time to get, get students dismissed from the building, get students, um, seated on the bus and for the bus to make the runs and they may have to make several runs. So it, it, I, I can't give you an actual time yet until we run it to see what that will look like. But it won't be the regular, um, time that they would normally take once school is dismissed. That process is going to be slowed now because of the social distancing that we have to keep as students are, are boarding the buses, exiting the classrooms, exiting the schools as well. So that's going to slow things down. And a lot of that played into the, the schedule also because we know we have to run the elementary schools and the, the middle schools as well. And then you allow for the, the time in between the transport of the separate tiers. Because once you let the, any group of students off, whether at school or at home, that driver has to, to park the bus and do the disinfecting before any other students can get up there. So some of that time was factored into that as well. So we had, we had to consider all of that when they came up with the schedule because you, the, the normal time that they usually would have, you know, is extended a little bit because of those extra precautions that we have to take.
Okay. And then, uh, thank you, Dr. Bracy. Uh, also a question related to the bus, just thinking about kids and how they are on the bus. Are we, I guess, how is the policy or what is the bus driver to do if they notice that a child is not wearing their mask? A child has pulled the mask down? Or are we putting that on our drivers to monitor that as well?
Well, yes, we want to make sure that, that, that would be, I would look at. Well, yes, we wanna make sure that, that would, that would be, I would look at that as a, if we were not in the pandemic, if they, if they tell the child to sit down, or, or get back to your seat, you was just, hey, look, I need you to put your mask on.
Okay.
Yeah, so they, they would remind them to do that.
Okay, um, and then my question.
And there's a monitor up there as well, we also have a.
That's what I was gonna ask, there's another person, great, okay, great. Um, for food distribution, and I'm, I might be wrong, but I thought we were also u- utilizing the buses currently, to take food distribution to the neighborhoods, are we? So are, I saw in the plan that um, we're gonna have the grab-and-go meals at the schools. But are we, but then the option for parents or students to come to the school, but are we also gonna still distribute meals? Is that an, I see Dr. Simmons smiling, is that a no, Dr. Simmons?
You muted, baby, Dr. Simmons, you muted.
Ms. Tom, that, that will be tough, we've looked at it, but you know, with the restrictions, we'll need every bus we have in the fleet, to make sure we're getting kids to and from school. I think currently, we're using twelve to distribute meals out to the communities. And so we'll look at everything, we're partnering with, with Parks and Recs and trying to do some other things. Cuz those twelve buses will become critical for us in terms of trying to use, put them back in the fleet to, with all of the social distancing measures that we have to do in order to get our kids to and from schools.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Simmons, and I think it would be great if we can look at partnership with Parks and Recs. Because I've heard great things um, regarding the food distribution um, program with Porson Public Schools. And I think it would be a shame if we can't keep that, but I understand the limitations. But if we can look at some ulterior um, avenues to partner and utilize Parks and Recs, that'd be great, thank you. And then lastly, I think, oh, two things, one more thing, regarding food, that leads me to the in-classroom eating, in-person eating. Just talk to me, are, are we concerned, or is there any concern about that um, in-classroom eating? Um, is that like an hour, thirty-minute hour of instructional time in the classroom with no mask? And I'm thinking about our teachers here and their concern there.
That is, um, I think the schedule calls for, I think it's, is it twenty to twenty-five minutes for, for the lunch? So what that is, the, this, the, our setup in the, in the classroom, it's gonna be six feet, six feet apart.
With the sneeze guards, right?
Yes.
Okay.
And the, and the, and the sneeze guards as well.
Alright, and then lastly, as a parent, I think one of the keys to whatever we decide to do, or when we decide to do, is just constant communication like this, this, even this meeting now, having the plan communicated is great. Um, do we foresee maybe developing, or do we have a dashboard that we can monitor? I know Board Member Schumake asked about like where we are today, where we can monitor and, um, you know, have that information available. I don't know if we can maybe like feed in the numbers from the Porson Health Department, um, so that we can have that constant communication and update with everyone.
We, we will have that in place, um, Mrs. Duran is already um, um, in, in, in consultation, with Dr. James at the Health Department of how we can establish our own uh, dashboard with that. So that's something that we would have in place by the time the students uh, came back into the building.
Okay, thank you, that's all I have, thank you.
Chair Patillo.
Ms. Atkinson.
Yes, thank you Chair, um, Board Member Thomas uh, brought up a, a point about, um, the students arriving home at twelve-thirty, and, and I know we have a, a high demographics of latchkey uh, children. Um, is, is there a way, or is our six-to-six A B C learning playing a role in this? Or um, is there, is there an update on that?
What was that, Ms., Ms. Atkinson, could you repeat a part of that went out?
So, uh, Board Member Thomas brought up a point about our students um, getting home midday. And, you know, we do have the working parents, so I know we do have that six-to-six program in which we contracted A B C learning. Uh, so what role or how are they gonna transition, or are they gonna be involved in the hybrid learning?
Well, we've been in contact with them, I think, I think you're referring to the, the alphabet.
Yes, alphabet.
So they uh, they are, right now, we, Dr. Lynn has been working with them. And we've got them outfitted to basically start at three, we've got three schools set up. But part of what's gonna drive this is the survey. Because we, it, we're basing it off of need in terms of how many um, parents are saying that they may, that they will need this option. And then we will make it available, because you remember, in, we, they were in all of the schools uh, during the, during, during the regular school year. So based off the, the survey information that we received, that's shared back with them, and then they, they plan accordingly uh, with that. So if class is dismissed at twelve-thirty, then they would be able to go and, and spend time in the, in the, the center with where they are, where they'll be housed, until the parents can pick them up.
How would they, so we will be provided transportation to the centers?
No, this is, this. What was that last part, Ms., Ms. Atkinson?
So you said, so we, we would provide the transportation to the center or alphabet?
No, we, we won't provide the transportation to the center. I think part of that right now, we will have to, I don't know if, Dr. Lynn, I don't know if you've had any um, conversation with them around that.
I have, um, so the conversation that we've been having with Alphabet initially, uh, they are looking to put forty-four slots at Trisham Primary, Parkview and Simon's Dale. And then they're hoping to be able to increase that um, each week as the need arises. Initially, because the board had asked, when we brought this plan before, we had talked about providing support for staff. And so since staff will be coming back to work, and some of them may have children at home, Alphabet is giving priority to our, to our staff. And if there are any slots available, they will open those up for, for uh, parents and, and for students. Uh, keep in mind that their space will be limited because of the fact that we have to operate with six feet distanc- distancing. Um, they're gonna be limited in what they can provide as well, but they're fully prepared to service at least forty-four students. And based upon the survey that they have already done uh, through parents and through staff, um, they, they feel um, that this is appropriate at this time, but they're constantly looking for ways to provide support to parents. Also, we don't provide transportation because their program starts at six o'clock. And so parents typically drop them off when they were servicing parents, and then they close in the afternoon and parents can pick them up at a later date. Um, so it usually is a, a situation where the parent provides the transportation, because once the kids are there, they're there until the, till their parents pick them up at the end of the day.
Okay, uh, thank you, thank you, Dr. Lynn, Dr. Bracy, um, another question. And, and this may be either for Dr. Bracy or Dr. Simmons. Uh, Dr. Simmons, I did see in your presentation that you guys were looking at um, deploying, outside uh, teams and researching um, that. Uh, I definitely appreciate the hard work of our staff, um, and, and you guys training them to do the deep disinfecting, uh, cleaning, but um, I also, um, again, and I, and I put emphasis on this, that I would like to see, um, I would like to see a professional company come in and also um, do the cleanings as well, just to add that extra layer of protection. Uh, so I know we said we were researching that, but um, um, that's one thing I would like to see on top of our staff on that. And possibly uh, sending out a R F P for professional services.
Yes ma'am, and, and we've, we've already um, began those discussions on that to, to, um, to make that happen. Uh, Mr. Falk and Dr. Simmons have, have talked about that, so that process is um, has already begun.
Okay, I just, I just wanted to be sure, so we're, are we, are we in the phase where we are about to solicit the R F P? Because I'm, I'm just basing it on the uh, projected timeline of when we're, um, if, if board approves to start back school, and I know this would, you know, have, be something that would need to be expedited, I'm looking at it on both ends, from the school end and from the, the business end, um, that's putting in the bids as far as getting their staff and things like that, so is this something that we're looking to expedite?
We are, I think, right now, what we're trying to, um, what we're trying to, to, to figure out is what this, what the schedule will look like. In terms of with, with our guys, in terms of how we're doing it, and what the support that they will provide afterwards will look like. Um, we need to, we've talked about the, the frequency of their, of their, their visits, and looking at the timing of it, because if they, they're coming in, they'll be doing the work. But we'll, we will still have um, maybe one or two people on site with them while they're there, to have them in and out of the facility, so. Uh, Mr. Falk, I don't know if you have any more information on that at the time, in terms of the process, uh, wh- whether it will be bid or if it would be R F P. I know you're researching that now, but I think a lot of that depended on how much, um, how much, the, how often would we have them in, and what would that entail in some of the buildings?
Sir, uh, good evening, school, um, school members. Um, we looked at this actually back in um, the summer timeframe. As we, well, spring, summer, as we were trying to determine our, our plans for coming back. Um, and, and there, there are some state contracts as well as, uh, obviously, we could go out for R F P. We talked about it, but obviously, we have to have the specs down of, as, as Dr. Bracy just said, the frequency, the timing. Um, how many times are they gonna clean, what type of cleaning are gonna, they're gonna do? They have, they have like a, a turnkey cleaning, where they come in and do everything from top to bottom. And they have some maintenance cleaning, so we have to kinda identify what we want from them. And then we could get a better understanding, whether it be R F P, or in some of the contracts that the state has um, provided for us. Because they've done a lot of the procurement on the backend, because they know that state buildings as well as school buildings need this. So we're just trying to find the right vehicle, once we get the specs, then we could get things out. But obviously, as you said, uh, Vice Chair, uh, Atkinson, it, if we do an R F P, it will take time. It's not something that can probably be turned around in a week. Uh, it's gonna take some time with the companies that are out there. So we would have to look at the most expedient vehicle possible, and being fair to all the vendors as well.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Falk, and uh, we were investigating this from the M W B E committee. And an R F P could be done in two weeks. Um, I know there are state contracts out, however, um, we do have aspirational goals. And, and the state contract would be um, sorta like a co-op. So I would like to give an opportunity for um, our M W B E businesses, um, to, to have a fair shot in contracting um, with this, with this opportunity. And, and, you know, we, we have a lot of experienced businesses out there. Um, and, and I definitely went, want to piggyback and lose um, in sight of, you know, our, our program goals. Um, so, so that's my comment regarding that, but we, we, like I said, we have been um, researching it, because we know what was to come, and um, that process can be done in two weeks. With the R F P still giving time for um, everyone to bid fairly on the contract.
Yes, yes, uh, we'll, we'll, um, we'll, we'll, we'll follow up that, um, Ms. Atkinson. I know that's something that, well, Mr. Falk and I will find out exactly where we are, and we, we can provide some information to you. Um, probably next week in terms of where we are with that.
Thank you, uh, just um, to uh, Dr. Bracy. Um, I know our, our, some of our students um, do receive support from day treatment providers. Um, I, I just would like to get an update, um, if not now, and maybe a future meeting on how they're gonna transition, um, as well, or, or how is that process um, been with our students? Um, so that could be um, updated in a, in a, in a future meeting.
Okay, will do.
Thank you Chair.
Alright, thank you, Ms. Atkinson. Um, I, I had a couple of questions also, Dr. Bracy, and I, I do wanna say first, say thank you uh, to you and your staff. Um, I knew and I have total confidence in you all, I know that if there ain- anything that can possibly, human possibly be done, that you all will make sure that it happens for the safety of our, our staff and our students, and I thank you for the efforts you all put into this plan. Uh, I do have a question first about the survey. I know we were originally looking at the numbers from the survey that was uh, that was given back in October or November. But uh, let's say with the new survey, the old survey, I believe, was around sixty percent uh, of students that were coming back uh, in person. Let's say with the possibility of a chance that it moves to seventy to eighty percent. Uh, how will we handle that with uh, transportation one and also in class with uh, so, with distancing and spacing?
Well, we, we just have to, we'll have to take a look and see where we are with, with those numbers. Uh, and see, yeah, that, that would be quite a lot that would be um, coming for in-person. But the previous one, you, everybody, the, the, the percentage was, was majority virtual at that time. So I guess now, if we, if we're saying, hey, now everybody feels comfortable, they wanna send their students back. If it's more, then what, how would we um, how would we accommodate them? But, you know, we're gonna look at that, and, and that's, that's part of the, the plan. And if, if it's, if it's more, um, Reverend Patillo, then the waiver is gonna be more important. If they're choosing to ride the school bus. But if they don't, then we gotta, we, we may have to come back and, and have a conversation with the board to say, hey, look, we've got, seventy percent, as you said, of our students that want to return. So in order for us to be able to do this, some of the, 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 the goals that we wanted to hit, to invite middle school students back, we may not be able to. Because if you have that many students, it's gonna take the majority of your time to get the students to the elementary schools. And most of our kids, you know, we don't have a lot of, um, we don't have many car riders. Um, we, most of our kids are, depend on the, the, the yellow buses for transportation to school, to and from. So that's something that, that definitely factors into our decision.
And um, also with transportation, for instance, I, I can only speak from the, the kids I mentor. And, and uh, for those that stay in the communities like London Oaks or Swanson Homes, they have like four buses. Uh, elementary school buses that go to those communities, and they're four kids. But I had to stand up this morning, I mean, it's like, you know, that, that they be over, they're, they're overflowing. So looking at the time it would take to get the majority of those kids in, and bring them off the bus one at a time. Uh, have we really factored in how long it would really take to get kids uh, in the building off of every bus? One student at a time, and to start the day by, uh, elementary time, I think was nine o'clock.
Yeah, well, yes, we have thought of that, w- w- we have. And we've also um, done some site visits as well to see how the other school divisions are, the ones that are in. What their procedure looks like for um, boarding and, and unloading the, the students to and from school. But with us, you know, that, I get, that was the example that I was trying to, that I was sharing with, with Mr. Tillich. You know, it, that's, it's tou- it's tough for us on a, on a typical day, with four buses going into one community. And it's packed when they come out, so that will play into it. And when you look at the schedule, you know, that's, we know it's gonna take a lot of time, it could take a lot of time transporting. So that's why you're looking at the modified day and not the full day. Because on a regular day, and you all have heard the stories, you know, the teachers will tell you that, I'm, I'm still at school and it's five-thirty waiting on a bus. So imagine what that would be if we kept the full-day schedule on a modified buses where we can't get but, one to a seat, two to a seat maybe. So that, that would increase the frustration that's there. So part of that was built into the early um, dismissal or modified schedule, just for that purpose, as well as the, the additional time that it's gonna take to, to clean those, to sanitize those buses between runs. So, yeah, we have, we've thought about it, and it, it will, it could, and it would present a challenge. But we don't, we won't know anything really until. We don't, we won't know anything really until we get these surveys back. And we'd find out exactly what each parent is going to do.
And I guess, uh, you or Dr. Wayne can answer this and, and don't make fun of me. I may just be sleepy. But with the schedule, uh, when we start testing on May third. And you said the teachers that will be assisting with testing. So for those students who are not. In person or out of testing, they will be doing the asynchronous learning. That is correct?
That is correct. And there is no other way to really do that. That's gonna happen whether we have in-person learning or not. Um, those teachers have to proctor the test and we have to have them in the classroom with the students. Um, and I, you know, when I introduced my, um, information tonight, I talked about that being the challenge. We're coming back in the throes of S O L testing. And, um, it is going to take away from instruction. It's also gonna take away the ability for our teachers to be live with students. Uh, but what we have to focus on at this time, I do believe is that there's another component here that's very important for our students. They need to transition back to a real in-person learning experience. Some of our kids have lost parents, grandparents, cousins, uncles, aunts to COVID. They have gone through challenging situations and so have our staff, some of our teachers. Coming back into the building is gonna be traumatic for them. And if we can't take anything else away from this, if we, if the board chooses to do this. One of the takeaways is that this is an opportunity for our children to re-acclimate themselves to an in-person learning experience. So that when they come back in the fall, they don't come in cold, uh, without having had any benefit of in-person learning. Especially for our pre-K and kindergarten students.
Yeah, I definitely understand that and the importance of, of school readiness also for our pre-K, uh, students. I guess with me, it's, it's still a, it's still a safety issue with me. Uh, it was a safety issue in the beginning. And it was six percent and I was begging to not send these people back to school. Now it's sixteen percent. And, uh, my feelings, I haven't, you know, really gotten over that yet. And I don't like to make. Every conversation, a cultural conversation. But you have to, in this instance, especially when it comes to testing. Because yes, tests are available, but for certain populations and certain communities right now. And a lot of our communities still don't have access to, to the vaccine. So although, and many of our teachers, they have illnesses and different issues to where their doctors are not recommending they actually take the vaccine yet. So you, it's a, it's a chance that you may have children coming from a community that does not have access to the vaccine yet. And bringing the teachers who have not been vaccinated. And. To me, it's, I think I'm just thinking that, I mean, I'm too empathetic about it and I'm thinking I don't wanna see anybody, uh, get sick. At all. But to me, even when it comes to state leadership, it, it seems like it's been a sacrificial form of leadership. It's almost. Hey, we know we're gonna lose some, but as long as we don't lose the majority. And, and, and to me, that's just not my. My, my method of thinking when it comes to, uh, this pandemic. But I know if we have to go back, I'm, I'm sure that the team that we have is gonna do what's needed and do what's best. I, I just, as one board member, I'm just not totally sold on the fact of sending everyone back. Right now because of the metrics and where we are. Uh, but the plan, the plan, if we have, if we must go back. The plan is great. I don't think, you're not gonna have a perfect plan. And you can't, uh, guarantee anything, but you all have hit pretty much every, not every hour across that routine with the plan. It's just my thinking as far as the danger of the pandemic that still gives me, you know, uh, the hesitation. Um, I believe it was Dr. Whitaker, then Mr. Parent and then Ms. Heinz.
Yeah, I have, um, I guess this is kind of a legal question. Um. When it comes to our teachers, as Chairman Patilla was, um, discussing. What happens if we have teachers? Who are just not comfortable of coming back because they may be caring for someone. You know, who hasn't been vaccinated yet and is vulnerable. And we also know, well, from what I've been hearing from, um, Dr. Fauci and the CDC. The vaccine itself, they don't know if it prevents infection. That is people who get the vaccine may still be able to spread the virus. So what if I'm a teacher? And I have family members who may be vulnerable. Portsmouth, you know, was the last to come online in Hampton Roads in terms of vaccination. And vaccinations are still difficult to get. Um, some people are saying it's due to hesitancy, but. From what I've heard, it's not that the African-American community is necessarily hesitant. They just can't get access to the vaccine. So are we going to give teachers the option of remaining virtual? Or is this mandatory that they go back to the classroom? That's my question. Thank you.
Well, the, well, we're asking all of the teachers to, um, to return. I think, um, that's something that, that we were weighing back for the, the recommendation when we was to come back in, in January. We were looking at, trying to decide if we know our special education teachers. Need to be in there because of the I E Ps and so forth. But. Would it, would it be a situation, I guess, uh, if you say of fairness to, for them to be in the building? And the other teachers don't have to report, you know, we, we looked at that as well. But the legal piece of that. Um, if the teachers can't come for whatever medical reasons, um. This is Durin or Mr. Carroll. I know we, we've talked about that. You wanna, you wanna, um, share that information in terms of what the, the options are.
It looks like Mr. Carroll is allowing me to speak on it. Um, so, and thank you for that, Mr. Carroll. Um, the options are for employees, not just teachers, to apply for an accommodation if they are. If they have a disability for which they are unable to return. Of course, if the disability is not directly with the employee, if it doesn't directly, um, if it's not. Directly the employee's disability, then we won't be able to approve them, um, to remain virtually and so, to remain virtual. And so your question, Dr. Whitaker, about if you live with a person who may have a disability. Um, I understand the concern, but legally. Living with someone who has a disability is not a qualification for you to be approved for an accommodation. And also concern or fear about, um, having COVID or catching COVID, contracting COVID. Is also not a disability for which you will be approved for an accommodation. Am I, am I saying that correctly, Mr. Carroll?
You are.
Okay.
Sorry to put it on you, but.
But I'm glad that you, thank you for confirming that because it's not that HR is just randomly. Making these decisions legally. That's, that's what it is.
Right. Was that all, Dr. Whitaker?
Yes, if I, if I think of anything else, I'll email. Thank you.
Okay. Um, Mr. Parent and then I believe it was Ms. Heinz and Ms. Thomas.
Well, Dr. Whitaker has asked the question that I was going to, uh, bring up. You know, we started down this road, um, if you recall, I think bringing the teachers back, uh, November the nineteenth. And then we had, you know, a lot of questions, a lot of concerns, then, um, they make, the health matrix. Um, went up. And so we as a board decided that we would delay it. And then we delayed it. And then we as a board just said that we would not, we, in other words, we, we would not make any decisions. So now as a board, we're coming back and Ms. Durham, I wanted to find out at this point. What percentage of our, of our staff have been, will have been vaccinated by the end of March? I think you said some of the, we had twelve hundred. Do you know the percentage? Because at this point, some of us are getting our second shot on beginning of Wednesday. And so we should have a pretty good idea of what percentage of our staff will be vaccinated.
Yes, sir. Um, it will be about sixty-seven point eight percent.
All right. My question is, and Dr. Whitaker has already brought it up and Ms. Durham. Think about it is if a teacher says that. Um, they cannot return because of health reasons and they have a certificate from their doctor. I mean, they have a medical reason for not coming. My concern now is that, um, we're gonna have, we're gonna have to have substitutes. That if you do the, if you do the, we do the hybrid, we do the in-person and then we do the, excuse me. And we do the, um, virtual. Um, that's gonna be a lot of, there may be a lot of teachers that says, you know, we just can't come back. Now, I mean, they signed a contract, of course. And, uh, and I hear the legal part of it. Mr. Carroll's brought the legal part of it. You, you, you brought that up. But we don't know at this point, because we, now we've kicked this can down the road. To almost the end of, of March, asking our staff, teachers. Because if you don't, I mean, if the kid, if the students are excited about coming back. And the parents, some of the parents are reluctant for them to come back. They're coming back to a school and we don't have the staff, we don't have the teachers to teach, then where are we? Uh, and the issue is, um, what action can we take? I mean, in other words. The expectation is March twenty ninth, all staff are supposed to report to their schools. And you're saying to me that, um, if a teacher presents a medical certificate from their doctor. That they can, they cannot come back because of dot, 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 and it's signed by a doctor, then we have to legally honor that. Well, we don't know how many teachers out there that are going to. Be submitting these kinds of documents. And if you don't have the staff, then, you know, we can bring all the students back we want. But if you don't have the staff to teach, that's gonna be a concern. And, and in closing. Um, I don't wanna put him on the spot, but Miles has sat there and he's been very quiet and, and, um, and he's a senior. And I just wondered if we could, uh, Mr. Chairman, if we could ask Mr. Hunt how he feels about. I mean, he's a senior, how he feels about, uh, seniors coming back. I don't know if you want, if that's appropriate to put him on the spot, but if he. He may or may not wanna answer it, but I think we need to afford him the opportunity to, to make a, a statement if he'd like to. So, thank you.
Absolutely, Mr. Hunt. The choice is, is yours if you would like to care to respond and Mr. Parent.
Well, I mean, it works for some and it doesn't work for others. So, I mean, it's really an option that each. Student's gonna have to look at and each parent's gonna have to look at by themselves.
Thank you so much, sir.
Thank you, Ms. Ma. Thank you, Ms. Todd.
Mr. Parent, was that all?
That was it. Thank you.
All right. Uh, I'm, I'm losing track. I believe it was Ms. Heinz.
Thank you, Chairman. Um, and once again, Mr. Mr. Hunt's using the word option, especially for the seniors and for those high school students. Um, I do have a couple of questions. I'm gonna try to clump them together so that they do follow a random, you know, a flow instead of it just being random. Questions, but I'd like to go back to Alphabet for a minute. Um. Is Alphabet's gonna be ready and available to take staff members' children on March the twenty ninth?
Yes, ma'am. They're gonna be ready at those three sites.
Okay. So the next question is if, um, I have a child that's at James Hurst. And their parent has signed up for Alphabet, do we have the option for a child to get on a bus to go from James Hurst to the next closest? So the only three schools that technically will be offering Alphabet is, we said, Churchland Primary, Brighton and Simon's Dale.
But if it's for staff, staff can drop their children off on the way to their school.
I get that. I'm talking about when we bring students back in.
On the twenty ninth, we'll have three locations and then they will be opening up locations as needed. So they're prepared to do whatever we need them to do. If the demand shows that we need more locations, then they're prepared to do that. Um, they're really chomping at the bit to get back in. So, uh, trust me, I don't think Alphabet's would be a problem.
Okay. So the next question is gonna be, because I know Alphabet and they are a consumer. That, you know, we pay them for their services. Is there gonna be a price increase for an extended after-school care? Because now the school day is not four or four thirty until six. The school day is now twelve thirty or one o'clock until six. So is there to be an increase in their, in the charge for their services?
They gave us a price list, um, and I can, I can, uh, share that with you. I can send that to, um, Ms. Chamberlain so she can share it with the board again. But the same price list that they gave us before applies this time. I also wanna clarify that with the sample schedules, you know, I, I want to emphasize that twelve thirty is not the time that students will be getting out. These are templates. Every school is on a tier. There will be some schools that dismiss at one o'clock or at one thirty. It just depends on what tier they are. And whatever time it is that they end according to their tier or begin, because they may not begin until nine o'clock. Um, that will determine what time they dismiss. It's my understanding that Alphabet, if there are children who will be leaving school, if they do have, uh, students. They will be able to come to Alphabet and be there until their parents pick them up.
Okay. Okay. So on that same thread of transportation and, um, as it was said earlier, that, you know, we have elementary schools. That some buses don't get there till five or five thirty. According to that template schedule, teachers are supposed to be back online. In the afternoon to work with students again. In the instance that we have buses that are running late because of the, because of the discussion that we've had around transportation today. Who's holding those children until transportation can get to the schools? So that those teachers can be back online for that afternoon session with the kids. I'm sure that there's an answer for this, but I need to make sure, because as many people sit at this table tonight. I'm wearing multiple hats and I wanna make sure that my, that my child is where they need to be to get on that bus to come home. I wanna make sure that the teachers are available to meet those expectations for those children that are doing. Whatever learning it is that they're doing. But we all know that we do have issues with buses that are, you know, five and five thirty, as it was mentioned earlier. And I wanna make sure that, that we have a plan in place for that as well.
So each school will no doubt have a plan for that. Uh, typically, the teacher does remain with the students until they're dismissed. Also want to stress that there's flexibility. The virtual students are the students that the teacher will touch bases with in the afternoon. That doesn't mean that they're holding a class. That means that they could be working with them independently. They could be working with small groups. We also have instructional assistants who can assist with that. I believe that every principal has a plan in place. I also want to stress that, um, you know, as, as, uh, Dr. Bracy has said. We, we are trying to build the best situation that we can around our students and for our students and their families. We're gonna have to be flexible. We're gonna have to understand that some of this may not go the way we expect it to. So we may have to make some adjustments in that. And if that's the case, then we will do it. Whatever the case, I think that what we're all committed to is doing what's best for kids.
Mm-hmm. And, and I, and I, and I get that, but there's, there's, you know, there's just logistics that we all know, all, there's a chink in everybody's armor. Um, and so I just wanna be sure that we have thought about, you know, everything and I'm sure that we have. Um, can you give me some idea of what the expectation is gonna be for teachers that are teaching both models?
The expectation is, um, that we will be working with teachers when they come in on the twenty ninth for this. Um, based upon the staffing that we have, it would be virtually impossible, no pun intended, for us to have two groups of teachers. We don't have enough staff for one group to teach virtual and another group to teach, uh, in person. However, because we have webcams and we have computers. Students can sign into a live classroom and be able to work. You're gonna have twelve or thirteen students in an, in an elementary classroom. You've got students at home who can sign in during live instruction or the teacher can hold, can choose to have a morning meeting. Outline the lessons for the day for the virtual group, make sure that they understand their activities and then move on with the class. Um, it's, it, you know, it is. Um, is, it, you know, it is um not the ideal uh situation. But many of our teachers are already doing this in some of our schools, um, where they might have been working with, with students and they're looking forward to it. In fact, they've been asking to do this. That way, and, and the other part of this is it allows the, the student to remain with their current teacher. It would be very disruptive for us to move students to new teachers at this point. And we want to be very sensitive to that, especially since we have, if we have them come into school for in-person learning. Then we have them working virtually. We have to make sure that we support them by making sure they have that teacher relationship. That would, that would not be in the best interest of children for us to move their teachers.
Okay, and I think when I met with Dr. Bracy and um Ms. Williams in our two-by-two meetings. Um, the first question I asked was where are we with staffing and are teachers and students gonna be able to stay together? Um, so I, I do appreciate that as well. Um, I wanna move on to the summer extension. We talked about summer extension espe- especially for those high school students. Do we have dates for that yet? Do we have teachers for that? And the reason I'm asking is because as a parent, if we are back to more open and we can do. A family vacation where we weren't maybe able to do it last year, or, you know, we're just, we wanna go ahead and start planning what our summer is gonna be. If we have that and we can go ahead and give those dates to those parents, that would be great. My other question is gonna be, is the summer extension optional, or is the summer extension? You know, strongly recommended, let, let's, let's use the governor's term, strongly recommended, but not mandated. How is that going to look? And if possible, can we get that out to the parents so that they can make those options and make those schedules? Because as a parent, I'm like, you know, I'm done with this. I'm done. I wanna walk away. Um, and we will come back to this, but some parents are gonna be, I need my kid to do this. I need my kid to do X, Y, and Z, and I need every support available. So, if we can go ahead and get those dates out. Um, and for those teachers that are doing that, are we offering them extra pay to come in and do this? Or is this, are we adjusting um their work calendars in August? Okay.
Let me, let me try to take a stab at that. You, you had about four or five questions.
Is there a plan? Can we give it to the parents? And how are the teachers gonna, how are we handling the teachers with this?
Right, well, we don't have a plan um for summer school um laid out yet. We were trying to get through this first and then we were gonna uh finalize everything with our, with our summer plans. It's, it's not, it's not mandated. It's, it's, it's an option that we're providing for, for our students and families that wanna take advantage of it. Uh, for the teachers, you know, it's, it's, you, it's the application process as it would be for any summer. If you plan to work. So, we haven't looked at the, the, the amount of time yet. Uh, as far as the, the, the length of the day, uh, the length of the program. You know, those are things that we will, we will take a look at and, and finalize, but it's up to our teachers that, that want to take advantage of the, of that, of that opportunity.
Alright, and I think my last one at this moment in time, um, for these students that are coming back to forth, it's eh, back and forth to school, especially the littles. The pre-K through three students, are we expecting them to carry devices back and forth to school? Or are we outfitted enough that they would have devices in school? What is gonna be that expectation for those parents? And for those um teachers that are going to be working with those students in class?
Their expectation is that they will bring their devices back and forth to school. Right now, I believe we deployed basically all of our devices, although Mr. Schlepper can speak more directly to that. But we have given every single student a device.
Right.
And so, um, we would be probably asking them to bring those back, especially those three through twelfth graders who will be testing. Because they will need to use their devices perhaps for testing.
And, and with that question, and then I'm done, I promise uh for now, is um, do we have chargers available at school? Are the students expected to bring their chargers and their devices back and forth? Simply because you will have kids. I mean, I've taught high school with a one-to-one for five years now. And high schoolers forget to turn, you know, to charge their devices. So, um, I just wanna make sure that we have every, you know, if we can have those opportunities for those students. Um, should they come in with a, an empty device?
Yeah, uh, great question. We've been doing one-to-one in our high schools for five years too, so. We're well aware of uh, of devices not being ready. So, we uh, we encourage kids to have their device fully charged before the day. That device typically will last the entire day. But um, yeah, divi- uh, chargers are a, are a hot commodity that we keep in ready supply at our schools.
Okay, thank you. I do appreciate it. With that, Chairman, I will, I will yield my time.
Ms. Hines, you don't have no more time. I'm just kidding. Next was Ms. Thomas and then Ms. Mr. Tillage and then Ms. Williams.
Thank you, and I know this is a lot to absorb, so. After this, I'll be done with questioning too, and whatever additional questions I think of later, I'll send to our staff. So, real quick, um, Board Member Hines, one of the Alphabet, do we have a discounted rate uh for our teachers? Dr. Win.
I don't believe they're giving a discounted rate, but their rates are very reasonable. In fact, I'm looking right now for um the rate sheet that they sent us, but um. They did not give a special discount for, for teachers. The rates are set completely by Alphabet.
Okay, um, if, that would be nice if they would do that. Just, just as a good. Okay, um, and that includes bus drivers too. Um, let's see, my next question. I didn't ask this earlier, but I meant to ask it when Dr. Simmons mentioned how they have outfitted the bathroom stalls to have every other stall. Um, closed off. Will we be having some type of change in policy or monitoring? Um, I'm thinking about elementary school students and um if more than one child is in the restroom, they take their mask off, they see each other. Like, how, how are we adjusting for that?
Was that for me or for?
Oh, Dr. Simmons, probably.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, okay, is that administration question? Okay.
Yeah, I'm, that. One of the things I know that um, that came up, Mrs. Thomas, was, was dealing with the bathrooms and, and I guess. Who will be monitoring the, those bathrooms? So, one of the things that we were looking at is that if, if our high schools are virtual, then. The, all of the custodians that are assigned to the high schools, some of them can be um redirected to some of the elementary or the middle schools. To assist them with the cleanliness of the bathroom, so that you have some, another body there that can focus primarily on the, on those, on those facilities. So, that's what we've, we've looked at in terms of um the bathroom usage. And, you know, of course, with the keeping the masks on, we, we're gonna try to keep. Emphasizing that, you know, throughout the day. And I'm sure as they get used to it and get accustomed to it, you know, they'll know that they need to keep, keep those masks on. But, yeah, we'll have someone to, to keep those, those restrooms clean and sanitized during the day. Um, on a regular basis, because as students come in and out. You know, you're gonna have to do that a little bit more than you would a, a classroom, just for the nature of it being a bathroom.
Okay, thank you. And then two more questions. Next one is just kind of going back to this dashboard of metrics. And Chairman Patillo mentioned, you know, not having, basically, you know. Being at six percent and being, that's, that was when the decision was made to kind of close schools initially. Then we're ten percent, now we're kind of sixteen percent, sixteen point seven percent positivity rate. Do we or can we establish some type of threshold? So that we can kind of take the guesswork and the back and forth out of these conversations? Cause we know we're gonna be stuck with COVID for a long time. What is our bar where we say, okay, when we get to this positivity rate, we're back to virtual? Or when we get to this, do, do we have that set or can we set that? I, I'm just thinking like, this back and forth might be a lot going forward in the future.
Well, I mean, that's, that's a, a, a board um choice in terms of.
Okay.
You wanna set, set a threshold, because, you know, you've got, we've got, we've got some of our neighbors that, that have higher positivity rates than us. That are, that are, that are in-person, um, almost totally in-person. So, it's, it's really a board preference in terms of what you want that to be. And of course, you know, we'll, we accommodate, you know, whatever your pleasure is in, in terms of that. Now, you already had a threshold in place, as I shared uh last week. You said ten percent under, ten percent for ten consecutive days, being under ten percent. So, that's what the board had stated um in the past. But at the meeting, you know, when um Chair Patillo uh opened it up to go around to get, to get some thoughts and ideas on. Whether or not we need to consider a, a return. That's how we got here.
Right, so it sounds like we're almost at the point, and I'm. If, what, if what we're kind of at this point where it doesn't matter what our positivity rate is. We're gonna provide options for reopening and back to school with the proper mitigations. Because the governor has not mandated, but strongly suggested in the terms of Board Member Hines. That we provide that option for kids. So, I'm saying that to say positivity rate is out the door. I, I know, I'm not saying that you can answer that. This is for the board. This is a discussion for the board. But it's almost like positivity rate is out the door. This is, what are the best options to safely. Provide in-person learning for our staff and students. That's almost where we're at. Is that what everyone would say? Okay. So, I, I just wanna get, I see some nod, head nods, no, but I'm just throwing that out there. It seems like that's where we are. Okay. And I don't, I don't know if that's the right place to be or not, like, honestly, cause we have a different population here in Portsmouth. So, um, that's impacted differently by COVID. I don't really have any other questions. Uh, for Dr. Win, one, one thing I wanted to know how we consider is just. You know, when I heard, you know, it is a mandate or is required that we do SOL testing in person. I know some students who have been personally impacted by COVID, who have lost close family members. And I'm just worried about their anxiety level for the testing. How are we approaching that or what are we doing about that?
Well, we make the test available. We ask the students to come and take the test. And if there are those who opt out of the test, um, then there really isn't much that we can do about that.
Does that impact the schools at all, like the?
The tests are a requirement for the United States Department of Education. They are not counting for accreditation this year, however, because of USDAE, we are required to uh administer the test. We're not clear yet how they plan to use the data from this. Uh, it is not a decision that was made by a local school division. It is something that has come from the federal government. And to, and from the state through the federal. So, um.
Thank you.
We are following a rule. I wanted to speak to your Alphabet question very quickly. If you will go to alphabet.org and click on the location and click on Portsmouth. There will be a link there to show you what the rates are. And they will honor those so, same rates for those people who are interested.
Okay, thank you so much, Dr. Win. I'll go check it out. Thank you.
Thank you so much, uh, Mr. Tillage.
Yes, thank you, Chair. So, as a school division, our, one of our biggest jobs is um to, it is our biggest job is to provide excellent. Um, education to our students. Um, but a part of that, in order to do that, we have to make sure that our staff are well-equipped. Are si- and have a feeling of safety. And based on this presentation, and probably every department, every school system, so I'm not just limiting this to Portsmouth. But it's, a bulk of this is falling um on whether or not transportation can perform. And. Do we know how many bus drivers we currently have at this moment?
I don't know what the, I don't know the um, the number that probably, I've heard the number that we don't have. Dr. Simmons, do you, do you know the number of, of vacant drivers that we have? That was something that, you know, I asked Mr. Privet, based on the number of drivers that, that we, that we do have. Does he think it would be possible for us to do the, the pre-K through eight? Because initially, we were looking at pre-K through six. But then, after speaking with him and we were looking at a hybrid model and potentially have an opportunity for a waiver. We were able to accommodate pre-K through eight. So, that was based on the number of drivers that he, that he had. Uh, Dr. Simmons?
I don't have that particular information tonight, readily available in front of me, but I'm, I can get it in terms, I don't know if Ms. Duren has that in terms of HR. But we can get it certainly to you uh tomorrow, in terms of to get you those exact numbers.
Okay, cause I know in the presentation they mentioned, you know, we have a hundred and thirty-two buses. Now, I know when I was a bus driver just five years ago, we were nowhere near um full capacity then. And just from reports and things, I just wanna make sure we have enough drivers. And if we don't have enough drivers, is there a way that we can look at possibility of outsourcing transportation? To help alleviate some of this burden off of our transportation staff?
We'll certainly take a look at that, uh, Mr. Tillage, in terms of, and we'll, we'll get you all that information in terms of sending it to. Dr. Bracy first thing in the morning to make sure. And I know we've got a committee meeting next week as well, so we'll certainly take all of that into consideration, make sure we get it to you.
Alright, um, and another question, um, once again, in regards to transportation. Um, according to the Department of Education's website for their COVID, um, they're returning back to school. Um, page that they have for recommendations. Um, in their, on their website, under the transportation, um, number one twenty-eight. It states that the National Highway Safety Administration has approved the use of partitions directly behind drivers. Um, the partition material and installation must be approved by the school manufacture, school bus manufacturer and certified to meet all applicable federal. Motor vehicle safety standards. Partitions located in the passenger area are not per- um permitted. Drivers can use PPE, including face shields, as long as face shields do not impede the driver's view. Can we look into, and I can go ahead and send you all this links that you, that you will have it. Can we please look into having um some type of barrier, sneeze guard, or something put with our drivers? Cause to me, I mean. We, we want our all staff to feel a sense of safety and that their health is valuable. And so, you know, mentioning having more than twenty-two kids on a bus that's forty feet long by six feet wide. You know, there's not, the bus is only six feet wide, so everybody's gonna be less than six, six feet apart. And so, to make sure that our drivers are, and our monitors, cause it was stated earlier that all buses um would have a monitor. We need to make sure that our staff are properly um given all equipment and are able to. Protect themselves the best that they can, um, while transporting our students to and from the school buildings.
Yes, sir. We absolutely will.
Mr. Tillage, was that all?
That's it, I'm sorry. Yes, yes, true.
Thank you, sir. Now's Ms. Williams and then Ms. Hines.
Uh, thank you, Chairman Patillo. You know, I've been one of those that always talked about the, the science and the positivity rate and the metrics and all of that. And I do know that last week, it, we were saying we were at nineteen percent. This week is sixteen percent. So, I am thinking since it's trending down across the nation, that probably by the end of March or April. Then we probably will be under ten percent. But if, if that does not hold, then of course, you know, we have been known to change paths. When we must. And um, I, I do think that, uh, you know, we've had some very good questions and answers and. Lot of discussion and. This, this is a, a very difficult situation and a very difficult time. So, I don't think anything is gonna be perfect. It's just a matter of uh, can we do in-person and all of that? Now, one of my questions came up about the twelve thirty or one thirty time. Because if you have to unload the bus one by one, by the time you do all that, it's time for the kids to go home. So, I was wondering why not make it longer? I, I do believe that the superintendent will um. I, I do believe that the superintendent will um do his best to make sure we, that the seniors have some type of graduation in keeping with the governor's uh executive orders or guidance. And although we want all of this stuff to flow and work perfectly, we do have to uh pay attention to what the governor and the legislators do. Uh, we had a lot of discussion yesterday from our delegates on Senate bill uh that the Senate had, had passed, that they wanted us to go back immediately. So the House, House version is a little more flexible, but they are saying by July, all schools will be back. And um, if, if we, I think if we are naive enough to think that this will not affect our funding of education from the state, then we are really in a, in la-la lane. Because Portsmouth and Richmond cannot be the only school divisions that refuse to go back. And uh, you know, I've always talked about Dr. Fossey. I, I follow him. He is advocating that we return because it's more detrimental to the students that if we do not. So, you know, we, my, my primary thing is safety and the options. The options for the parents, because the parents will make the final decision with that survey on whether the, the kids return or not. And we have offered the vaccinations. I had my second one today. And thank God, it was ten o'clock. I still feel well. And so we, we've given everybody the opportunity. They've been scheduled. There will always be people that will never take a vet vaccination. That's not their thing. But those that wanted to, wanted to get it, uh, the school system and the health department worked hard to get that. So there comes a time when we got to go back. We've got to go back to school. Like I said, last week was nineteen, this week is sixteen. I do believe that by, with, with the mitigating factors, the vaccinations, the mask, all of that, I think we will be under ten percent. But as uh Board Member Thomas said, um, this, this pandemic is new and it teaches us new things every other month. And they claim they're learning more and more. And I still trust Dr. Fossey. And when he says it's safe for the kids to go back, um, I kind of believe that. So anyway, they, they're my concerns. I just want to make sure our seniors, I wish they had the option, like Sarah or, or Mr. Parent was saying, to return if they wanted to. And um, I don't know about the twelve-thirty day. I think that's very difficult for working parents to figure that all out. So, but you know, we've had a lot of food for thought. So we got plenty to sleep on and send Dr. Bracy more questions if we have more, right, Doc?
Yes, ma'am.
So thank, I, I've had a good, good uh earful. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Chairman Patillo.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. Uh, Ms. Heinz?
Yeah, I have a question and then I have a statement. Um, in regards to the S O L and the opting out, Dr. Nguyen, I just want to make sure we're not giving high school wrong information, because as a high school teacher, the opt-out for the S O L testing is really not an option, depending on what their graduation status is because of the need for verified credits.
Correct. So um, parents have the right to opt-out of, of any of the S O L tests. For elementary and middle school, it will show as a no-show or uh N S on their um, on their uh score sheet. For high school, they can opt-out, but if it is a course in which they need for Eng- English eleven, for example, in which they need a verified credit, they will not be able to get that verified credit until they take the assessment and therefore they will not be able to graduate until they have that verified credit. So it is essential for high schools to take their end-of-course test, because in most instances, they need the verified credit for graduation for those. So I'm glad you asked for that clarification.
I, I'm sitting here and I'm going, wait a minute, my kids don't have an option. I don't have an option to opt-out. So um, that leads me into, um, first off, I want to thank Dr. Bracy, your team for being here, for answering our questions, for putting thought into a plan. Um, as I have told many people lately, um, we don't have a right answer. We're planning for two words that nobody likes, something new and something different. And we're putting both of them together, um, and that just does not resonate within a lot of people's guts um that new and different are going to be at the same time. So I, I do want to thank you all um for that. Um, as a, as a teacher, as a mom, and as a board member, I know I don't have the right answer. I know that we don't have anything that is a hundred percent proof, because we are all human and humans all make mistakes. I understand trepidation at every level. I understand the trepidation of parents. I understand the trepidation of a teacher. And I understand the trepidation of a board member. So I just want those that are watching to know that this is not being taken lightly, that we are having our discussions, that there is a lot of thought, there's a lot of heartburn, there's a lot of tears, and there's several gray hairs that are going into this um as well. So um, with that being said, I look forward to a little bit more discussion with our board. Um, and not so many questions with um Dr. Bracy at this point. So thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Heinz. Dr. Whitaker and then Ms. Schumake.
Thank you, Chairman Patillo. I just have a question for clarification. Um, it was mentioned that Richmond is not going back and I just wanted to make sure that if we decide not to go back, that, does that affect our funding? Because I heard that mentioned somewhere. And I guess this is a question for Dr. Bracy.
For this school year, uh, Dr. Whitaker, there won't be any uh, that, that we won't have any impact as far as funding. I think what they're looking at um is, is for the next school year, that we would have to be in-person. So that originally, the, when the bill came out, they said if we, if we weren't coming back for in-person, then we would lose, lose some of our state funding. But that's been um, they're, they're meeting now to adjust that language, so it looks like it's going to be sometime for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year.
All right. Thank you. And um, for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year, are they saying that everyone has to be back or some form of being back in person?
Some form of uh in-person, uh, uh, the majority of it is um the regular, regular school day, um, five, five days a week, um, all students in. It'll, it'll, I'm sure there will still be some type of um mitigations in place, face covering um at that point. But there will be a virtual uh option for those that would want that. So we would have to provide a virtual option.
Okay. Thank you.
And I, I also want to comment to that uh, being that we ha- we must provide a virtual option, that's one of the reasons why administration added the virtual learning specialist position into the budget this year for us to consider um, and this year's budget as well, to make sure that we have someone focused on virtual learning as an option. Um, Ms. Schumake?
Thank you, Chairman Patillo. I'm gonna make this very quick. I don't have a question. I just have statements. Um, because I've had a lot of people to contact me about various things. And so uh, one of the things was um in regards to the testing. And um, I know I spoke with um Congressman Bobby Scott's office earlier this year. Well, we're still in the early part of this year, but um, as it relates to S O L uh testing, and I did have a few parents to um reach out to me as of right now, um, asking, you know, what was the update with that and why did they still have to do that? So it is still mandated by the federal government. His reasoning behind that was because um, he stated that unfortunately is politics. Republican and Democrats want to look at some numbers so that they can determine our funding. Plain and simple. So that's why our students are having to continue to um do the S O L testing, because it is still uh federally mandated at this point. Um, so I just wanted to clarify that we couldn't do a waiver, because then that would affect um long-term our funding uh from the federal government, which would matriculate down to the state funding and so forth. So I just wanted to kind of clear that up. I also had um a few um teachers to ask about um what would the distancing guidelines look like for substitute teachers? And I guess the question was, and this is not necessarily a question I'm gonna put it as a statement, and this is not to disparage your competence as to what you guys have already done, which is very great. You know, you guys have thought about mostly everything, but I just want to put this out there. They, they're stating that, you know, what if a teacher comes in sick? What does that mean for substitute teachers? Will you guys have enough substitute teachers um to go into the classrooms just in case, you know, a teacher is not able to, to be there? And being that you can't have the student like before to go into another person's classroom, are we able to ensure that we have enough staffing? And so that is not for you to answer right now. They, they're just kind of putting that out there like, hey, can we make sure that we have enough substitute teachers just in case um this happened, which it could possibly happen if we do decide um to bring everyone back uh this school year. So that was it. No question. Just wanted you to kind of ponder on that. Um, and thank you so much for all of your hard work and thank you, uh Chairman Patillo, for this time.
Thank you, Ms. Schumake. Just to make sure I, I have not uh, uh ignored anyone that need to make another statement. All right, if all of our hearts and minds.
Hello. Thank you, Chair. Um, I, I, I think it was uh Board Member Tillich that made a, a comment about graduation. And I, I just wanted to uh make the statement that effective Monday, um, outdoor, um, venues, concert venues, um, capacity has been increased to thirty percent uh or one thousand. Uh, so for a venue like the TED Con Center, they would be able to accommodate if we wanted to host a graduation there again based on the government's quarter. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Were there any other comments or concerns?
Uh, Chairman Tillich?
Yes, sir.
Um, the, I know what Ms. Atkinson is uh referring to. And that, that falls under, that's under number twelve of the, the governor's uh executive order. That's, that's entertainment and amusement business, whereas the, the lesser of thirty percent are the lowest occupancy load on the certificate if applicable, a thousand persons. We, we reached out for some clarification. We fall under the recreational, which um still sets us at two fifty. That's one of the reasons why we can't um. The question came up about athletics, and that's why we're still in, we fall under recreational. So if we were, if we were having spectators in our, in our schools, the limit for us would be two fifty. Yeah, so that, that question came up earlier today that we got some clarification on, because I think a lot of parents are now thinking that we can do a thousand, a thousand students outside, but that's not the case, because we've, we fall under the recreational piece. But I'm hoping at least by um, by May-June, that would be lifted, where we could, we, we would fall into that category. But I believe that one thousand, that's still for outside.
It is.
Yeah. But we'll, we'll keep you all updated on that as, as far as the occupancy uh loads go.
Thank you, sir. Uh, Ms. Heinz?
Uh, can I back on that? Um, Dr. Bracy?
Yes.
So I, I guess it, it can now be a two-part. So um, it, it did say thirty percent it, of the capacity. So for a venue like the TED, um, and what they can hold, so I guess it was referencing that type of venue, no more than one thousand. But for like your, your smaller venues, it was saying no more than two fifty. So are, since you, since you did bring up the athletics, we're, we're not going to allow parents to attend now?
No. Well, right now, the, the, the Eastern District has decided that right now they won't have any spectators. This was decided when they were under the executive order two, and even with the executive order three that, that came out, that there was no change made to the existing order as it pertains to sports. So that two fifty is still, is still there. Well, and, but they are going to revisit it um sometime next week. But for the first games this week, there will be no spectators, and that's not, this, that's not solely a Portsmouth decision. I know a lot of people will think that, but we, we also play Norfolk, I mean Norfolk, Norfolk. We're in the, the district with Norfolk, so we both have to um abide by what they vote upon. And our football games are, are not going to be played in Portsmouth due to our fields and the conditions of our fields during this time of the season with all the rain that we've, that we've had. If you go out there on the fields, you know, by the end of the first quarter, they'll be torn up. So they've decided to move all the games to Norfolk to play on the turf field. So as I was sharing ear- earlier, so if, if we do go over there to play, you know, we have to abide by the, the um, the agreement that, that's in place. But we are going, they are going to revisit it. They did say that.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, uh, Ms. Heinz.
Yes, thank you, Chair. I, I'm gonna be quick. I'm gonna piggyback onto the senior activities real quick and talking about outside. I don't know if there's any way that we can plan a prom outside. I don't know if there's any way that we could use a parking lot or that we could set up a stage on any of our fields, uh, put up some tents. I mean, if we're talking, you know, outside venues, if we can do athletics outside, is there a way that we could do a prom outside? And that is, I'm just gonna let that one sit there and we'll, we can revisit that one later. Um, but also I want to go back to the schedule one more time, Dr. Nguyen, when we are doing um, the, these um hybrid schedules um with the um, with the early release. And then how is Encore going to work? Because I want to make sure that our students are still able to get um music and art, um, library.
Well, music will not be able to do face-to-face because of the C D C guidelines, and so music will have to continue to be virtual. Um, they will be able to participate in art. They will have physical education and they will be able to have recess um in elementary school. But because students cannot sing together, they, you know, they can have.
Play instruments together, yeah.
Play instruments. Um, they will have to do those things virtually, but Encore is included.
Okay.
In the um, in the schedule, as you can see. And that time can also be used for social emotional support for students and all of that has been factored in.
Okay. I just want to make sure we weren't losing the extracurriculars that make it worse. Okay. Thank you. With that, I yield back.
Thank you, Ms. Heinz. Ms. Thomas?
I'm sorry. I know I was gonna email a question, but I forgot one and for, is for Dr. Nguyen. I really appreciate um the fact that you all made a really, you stated clearly that, you know, all effort was made to not change the teachers. Um, is there, do you foresee any issues with teachers having to teach in-person and um, I guess interact with the students that are also virtual? Or do you think that'll be?
I think it's challenging, but I think our teachers can handle it. As I've said, a number of teachers in our um elementary schools are already looking forward to doing this. In fact, they requested that they do this. Um, it is very doable. Um, and I think it will be something different, so it will be a challenge, but um I think virtual learning is something that we have to learn to adjust to, because even when we go back to in-person learning in the fall, we will have some semblance of virtual learning, because, because there will be students who will not elect not to come. because, because there will be students who will not elect not to come back to face-to-face instruction. So it will be something different, but this is, this whole experience is different. We're all, we're all learning to do things differently. And as I've said to my staff, and I will say to you, public education as we knew it will never be the same. And so we will never teach the way that we taught. This is propelling us to a different way of thinking and a different way of teaching and a different way of learning. And so it's an adjustment for everyone, but we're, you know, we're going to stay the course and we will learn this.
Okay. Thank you. And then last, I don't have, it's not a question. It's just, again, just to reiterate, a thank you for everyone, all the planning that this has taken place to do this, to adjust. It's not easy. It's not an easy decision at all. And then I guess my only thing is we kind of echo this whole theme. Our project manager, so I look at like, what's the most critical path for us to really get, get this done? And it's a lot, but one of the most critical components in listening to the people other than our teachers that were really, and parents and students, just our transportation. And Board Member Tillage outlined some things that we can do to provide the best safety for our bus drivers. But I just want to also echo, I hope, Dr. Simmons, however, we can, I don't know, increase. I know Board Member Tillage said outsource transportation if needed, but I can see transportation being a key piece to make this all happen, to basically operate two school systems, a virtual and an in-person. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Thomas. Were there any other comments from board members at this time? All right, a motion is not needed, so I just call this meeting adjourned.